I'd like to welcome everybody and thank you for being here tonight. And we will start off with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, there is a sign-in by the door if you'd like to sign in. And do we have revisions?
Yes, we do have one revision. That is 5A under facilities. It says to review the BG1. We're actually going to revise the BG1 for that project to reflect a funding change. So from review, we've got to revise and approve that revision. And that is it.
Okay, we will start off tonight with our recognitions and first is our mountain movers.
Brian, you want to come up and present this one?
First, let's start off with our community mountain mover this month. And Calvary Baptist Church was chosen as our community mountain mover. And Calvary Baptist is very involved in the community. They host an annual Thanksgiving dinner that provides over 300 meals annually on Thanksgiving Day. They also host a Memorial Day cookout for families decorating graves near Calvary Baptist. They also deliver backpacks monthly to our schools through God's outreach. And they also do prayer walks through our schools every year before schools are in session. And they are a great community partner with West Urban especially. And we just want you to know this afternoon that we really appreciate what you do for the kids of Estill County. And we want to present you with a certificate. And also, we'll give you, and we'll give everybody in the church one, but we'll give you one to display as a medal of excellence. And any words for us?
We just love this community. Thankful for a church that serves the community and serves the school. And so, we're here for you guys as you all serve our kids. God bless you. Thank you.
Our next mountain mover is Ms. Darla Estes. Darla has worked in transportation for two years and has been driving a bus for a year and a half. She loves her bus babies and she loves telling them good morning and seeing those smiles. And we talk a lot about our bus drivers all the time. They're your first line of defense every day.
Absolutely.
They're the first ones that see those babies get on that bus. And they have a very important job. And Darla loves working with her work family and annoying her bus brothers and sisters. So Darla, thank you for what you do for our kids and our transportation. And I also will present you with the medal of excellence this afternoon. Thank you for what you do. And finally, our last mountain mover. I got an email just a couple minutes ago. Diagnosed with the flu this afternoon. So she's not able to be with us, but it's Ms. Brandy Smith. She's an eighth grade language arts teacher at Estill County Middle School. She's been teaching for 14 years and it's her second year with us at ECMS. And Brandy says that eighth graders are special because they are mature enough to have a conversation and still young enough to have fun. And it takes a special person to be in a middle school. I can tell you that. So we're very appreciative of Brandy and glad she's part of the Estill County family. And Brandy, if you are watching, we wish you nothing but Godspeed and hope you get better. Your kids will miss you on Monday if you're not able to come back. So that is our mountain movers this month.
Okay. And next on the agenda, we have a school student presentation by the high school.
And because of all student activities being canceled, I told them that I would rather them stay home. And what we will do is, next board meeting, we will actually double up. I can't remember who's on the schedule for next board meeting, but you all have that information. And we'll just ask the high school to come back and present then. And hopefully, our kids can stay home and rest the next few days. And let's get back into good attendance habits. Maybe they can get the feeling better.
Mr. Sailor, I don't know if now is an appropriate time to say, but you know, our high school's playing in the district championship tonight. So go Estill.
It is, and it is a good time. Since they were supposed to present, I guess they are going to do our presentation for us tonight over in Boonville. And we do wish them a lot of luck and go Engineers.
I have a little boy that's playing tonight and he's awful mad at his mama.
I actually went by and saw them this afternoon during their, or this morning during their shoot around. And they're actually the only sports team that's allowed to be practicing right now because of illness. And the band and cheerleaders, of course, are participating tonight. But it is an exciting time. They've had a good season, a young team, but they've grown a lot over the last few weeks. And they've got an excellent shot tonight to be the 56th district champion. So we wish them a lot of luck. And we know that this coming Monday or Tuesday night, they will be playing over in Stanton at Powell County High School. So hopefully, we'll have a big crowd there for that game.
We can't leave Rhonda Hardy out either. Elliot's playing tonight too.
Okay, so moving on. Next on the agenda, we will be going into closed sessions, so we will need a motion.
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Present on?
I think it'd be best.
Okay.
Speaker gloves off.
I do, I'm fine.
Lots of stuff here tonight. So related, I'm sorry, I was, I did not have an agenda. So I'm thinking, is this the pay app for Estill Springs?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeff.
There's the extra.
Okay, perfect.
Number two.
All right. So I wanted to let you all know that the design team did review the pay app that was provided to us from the contractor. The amount of $96,021.54. We feel like it is representative of work that has been completed and installed on the project. And we recommend approval.
And we've been, of course, we're in the final phase of that. It's about 99% done. They're right now in the middle of all the training manuals. You got all the training for the lights and the intercom system and all that. And Jeremy has been working with Ross Tarrant and CMTA to get all those set up. And Jason is still very involved in that project with momentum. So the project's basically done.
It is.
I mean, we're moving towards substantial completion within the next month.
We are.
By the next board meeting.
I absolutely think so. There's the interior signage is still, we've got that coming in. And I think other than that, Jeff, I really do feel like they'll be done with their punch list. And we will be substantially complete.
So my recommendation is to approve that pay application.
I make the motion that we approve the pay application, break.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving right along. Next, we have consideration approval of change order number nine to deduct kitchen flooring.
Okay, so this change order, which is deduct back to the district for $34,054.27, has to do with not installing epoxy flooring, which was an add that we added a few months ago. We looked, the district looked a little bit closer at what it would take to break down the equipment that's in the kitchen and move it out. For the duration of this project was a bit concerning for warranties. And so, we have asked that contractor take that out of the project. Do you have any questions on that?
Those are always good change orders to get that money back. Well, here's what we're going to do. There are about four places that the tile's very rough in there. One of our maintenance guys is a former flooring person. He can lay that tile. So we're going to, we're going to address the four areas that are in bad shape by laying new tile, sort of to match the color scheme of the building that is within the cafeteria now. That's sad news. We just lost. But with that being said, still had a good season. And we get a play next week. With that being said, we can address those and some of the old tile that's coming up in areas that's in better shape than some of the others. So we'll fill in, we'll make the flooring look great. We just could not afford to void the warranties on that equipment and have that issue down the road. And the one thing about it is, sometimes things just smile on you. About the time this project finished up, the water heater started leaking in that building. It's going to be about a $25,000 fix. But because we have the plumbing as part of this project, we'll be able to use this contingency money to pay for that. So we're going to save that from maintenance money. And we'll just use the bonding money to do that. So it's a, it's going to be a decent trade-off. And in the long run, we'll get the floor and we'll get a new water heater both. So my recommendation is approve that pay order. Or I'm sorry. Change order.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving right along, we have the roof replacement project.
Yeah, so as far as consideration approval of pay up number seven with the associated direct purchase orders. The weather has been quite, quite a bear to deal with for these roofers. And you can probably tell by the pay up amount, $35,972.60. It has been reviewed by the design team. And we do feel like it represents work that has been installed and completed on that particular project. And we would recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about what progress has been made on that project.
And they were working today. Guys, they're probably 98% done. Wouldn't you agree?
At the middle school, yeah.
It looks good too.
It looks fantastic. I mean, they've got to fix the yard. We know that that's got to happen. But they were seaming the metal panels today. They've got to have dry weather because you've got to walk the top of that roof all the way from the top to bottom with that seamer. And if it's slick at all, if it's wet, they can't do it. But they were out there working all day today. So, and believe me, the roofer wants to move on. He's got other jobs to do, but I mean, he just, he's doing the best he can. And we need to go ahead and approve that $35,000 payment.
I make the motion we approve it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have consideration approval of a change order number five.
Yes, okay. So this is for the roofing project. And it has to do with the middle school cupola, the thing that sits on top there. This was going to be tricky because we didn't have great existing drawings on this particular part of the roof. And we, and even if you have great drawings, you don't know what the roofer that installed the roof actually did as far as flashing around there. The metal company that has provided the roof, Barrage, in order to get a warranty on your new roof, insisted on a new detail around that cupola flashing area that required a stainless steel pan at that area. And that is what this change order is representing, the cost for adding that, that particular steel pan to the roof at that location. And it's $6,147.4. And we would recommend approval of that.
And I recommend that approval as well. And that is the last major thing they've got to do.
I make that motion we approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right.
And Peter, we will get it installed. It is stainless steel. And then if it does have the appearance that it's going to make a difference, we will be able to paint it. But right now, we're not going to paint it. The thought is, is that it's going to blend in because it's so far away.
I don't think you'll be able to see it from the ground. If you can, then we will be able to match the color of the roof. But I don't think you'll be able to see this particular pan from the ground. It's just too, you'd have, if you were flying in an airplane over the building, you might be able to see it.
Well, and the thing about it is, you have to have the warranty.
Yeah.
We can't do something to avoid the warranty. So it was money well spent to get it done.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the bus garage and the land purchase update.
Here is the preliminary letter. I just got this this week. So I didn't get it out in the packet to you all. Preliminary letter from KDE approving that. We need to pass those down to the press and everything. And as you can see, it's front and back, I believe. But there's a bunch of hoops that we will have to jump. That's what we got Peter and Brian for. They'll jump the hoops. And part of that, we've already done. The geotech has been done. And I guess that's just the next item. It's the update. So I'll just sort of talk about it as well at the same time and we can just move on. The geotech's already done. Now that we've got the geotech and we sort of determine, now we're going to have a site selection process for the bus garage. There's probably one or two places that has been investigated for that bus garage. And of course, we'll want to look at what's the most cost-effective place for we, for us to place that facility. And we've had that discussion before. And we'll bring you some more updates with just that property lines and all that next time. But that process is going well. And I tell you, I really appreciate Greg Dunbar from KDE. He does take some heat sometimes, and I've given him some. But you know, he was really forthcoming on it. He's been down here four times, three times, four times. Three times I know of.
Yes.
It may have been four, but I know it's been three times to look at three different properties for a bus garage. And I tell you what, you never thought it'd be that painful to try to buy a piece of property. But there is no property in Estill County when it boils right down to it that gets you to where you can get the sewer and water and those types of things. So Greg was gracious enough. And as a matter of fact, we probably, you know, some people's going to argue we didn't need that 160 acres. But that 160 acres can be valuable for this school district long after this board and I as superintendent are gone. But it's going to be a good purchase for us. And he, he found a way for us to do it within our current facility plan. And I appreciate him for doing that. So, and the geotech update right now has come back good. We'll get some ideals. I believe it's been pretty good. And I don't think we're going to see the problems that we saw at the industrial park. So we'll have an update definitely next time.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. The preliminary has already come back. And like Mr. Sailor said, it's good, but we don't have the full report yet.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Estill Area Technology Center. We're going to revise the BG1 and approve.
You have the original BG1. I'm giving you the new BG1. That has just been approved. We had to make sure that the financing was right on this BG1. And Peter can go over here in just a minute. Let me explain to you why we're needing to revise this. As you know, the nickel is equalized at 25% this year, 25% next year. And then with legislative action in next January, it will be equalized at 100%. So our bonding potential in the end is going to be around $19 million. But right now, it's only about 11 and 12. So with the Career Tech Center and the bus garage taking place at the same time because of where it's located and the fact that we just done $6.3 million worth of construction on Estill Springs and the middle school, we're sort of in a financial crunch. We're right in the middle of, we've got the money, we know it's coming. I'm getting paid Friday. I get paid tonight at 12 o'clock. And I know I'm going to get paid, but I can, you know, write a check and mail it tonight and it'll be okay. You know, I don't have the money in my account right now. So that's sort of the same situation that we've got here right now. So we had to do some things with the financial end of this to make it meet so that we would have a plan. So that is the revised BG1. And you might want to just talk to them, Peter, about some of the changes. You'll see a change into construction costs.
Right.
And he can talk to you about that real quick before I ask you to. Or he, we give you a recommendation to approve it for full disclosure, so everybody will know.
Yeah. Yeah, so while KDE was waiting to get the financial end of this thing sort of, sort of in where it needed to be, the design team has been working on looking at our cost estimates for the project to prepare for this design development submission that you're going to look at in a little bit. And we were updating our cost estimates. And we already had some information that you're going to see on this new BG1 confirmed. Like how much was the geotech going to cost? What was, you know, the plan review fee going to be? So the big, there are three things that really changed in this one from our standpoint. The first, you're going to see the cost of construction went up. And as so many of those items on that left side of the column are related to that cost of construction, they're percentage of fees and contingencies, if you will, they all sort of went up with it. We looked at the equipment furnishings line that went down a little bit. We felt like we had plenty of room on that line. And then the other, only other thing that really changed was that survey geotech HBC line. And again, that's because we already know what those services cost. Those have already been, they've already been in contract with, with the district. But you'll notice the overall project cost actually went down by about $80,000.
Lot of factors involved in that, knowing that the tariffs that are setting out there, that's a possibility. And remember that in this project right now, as alternates, you're bidding the parking in front of the high school is an alternate. You're bidding the crosswalk that connects the building to the high school is an alternate. There's also an alternate in this project for a possible fire suppression system. Because right now, the water pressure, there's some questions about water pressure. It's going to be bid as an alternate. But we've asked them to do that so that I can get with the water company and say, okay, what improvements can you all make to increase the water? Are there some options here to increase the water pressure in case of an event that we need water pressure for fire suppression or something like that? So there are some alternates here. So this is the building. This is the 40,000 square foot building right here with the cost that's involved with that. And I think it's probably good. We've got Travis here too.
We do.
Introduce Travis.
Yeah, absolutely.
Travis, come up. As you know, Codell is our construction manager. Travis Curry is from Codell Construction. And they're very involved in the design of this building. So Travis, introduce yourself and just tell them a little bit about.
All right, as Mr. Sailor said, my name is Travis Curry with Codell. I'll be the project manager for your ATC project. I've been involved lately with Mr. Sailor and your design team in meetings and looking at costs and schedule and alternates, et cetera. So I just wanted to be here tonight to introduce myself and answer any questions you may have related to the process, my involvement, et cetera. So if you've got any questions, fire away, or I'll be around afterwards to ask any questions you may have.
And so you all know, new to the process and talking about why do we have a construction manager? Number one, a construction manager is on the job site every day. They watch every, every ton of concrete, every rock that's moved there, there. They're part of that process. They're also very important in the bidding project because this project will not be like a normal bid where we will get one bid. This is going to be what, 14?
You know, we have about probably 14 bid packages.
14 different bid packages on each particular part. There'll be a bid package for site prep. There'll be a bid packet for electrical.
The masonry roof, plumbing, HBC, fire protection, painting, fore coverings, windows, multiple bid packages.
The ideal is, is that you can get some smaller companies involved that can't bid the whole project. But you know, they can bid the windows and they can come back with a better price. So it drives the cost down. And I've told Travis, your job is to drive the cost down on this project. And then once we get the bids, and you know, they're going to get the best price they can. They'll work because they have contractors that they work with in each one of these things. So they're already talking to contractors. Hey, this is coming, guys. We're breaking ground in May. We've got a site package coming. So get ready to bid this. Know that it's coming. We want you to be a part of this project. So we'll get the prices. And then, once they are here, their job is to keep down change orders.
That's right.
We're paying upfront to keep change orders from happening on the project. Doesn't mean there won't be one. But I think you'll see that it's well worth the money. Because I don't have the expertise to go out there and say, this is the right concrete here.
That's right.
They do.
Mr. Sailor said, we're independent. We don't self-perform any of the work. So it's kind of, if you self-perform the work and you're out there doing your own inspections, it's kind of like the fox watching the hen house. We answer to you, the board. So we're not connected or tied to any contractor. We're solely independent. And one thing is, Mr. Sailor said, I'm here also to drive the schedule. I know how important it is for you to want this building come August of 2020. But let me tell you right now, in order to do that, we have to have the perfect storm to do that. Today is the 52nd day of 2019. And we have had rain 31 days out of the 52 days. So we're on record to beat the rainfall we had last year. So we are going to do our. had last year. So we are gonna do our best, that's the reason we're doing some early bid packages, to achieve your August date. But it's gonna be very difficult unless we have that perfect storm. I just wanna tell you that now. But we are gonna drive it, and we're gonna push it. But none of us sitting here today have any control over the weather. And, you know, we may get an inch of rain today, and if we're out in the middle of doing earthwork, that doesn't mean they're able to go back to work the very next day. There's certain timeframes you gotta allow things to dry out. But we'll have a good detailed schedule. We know what it takes to build this job. If we didn't, let me say this also, the national average for a year of adverse weather days is 60 days. So if we get those 60 days, that puts us past your August date. But let me tell you, we're gonna do everything we can to try to make that happen for you. But it's a kinda, the weather's out of all of our control. So.
Under budget and ahead of schedule.
There you go. Well, that's what you hired us for. So we're gonna do, we're gonna do our best to make that happen for you.
If we were doing site right now, we'd have a swimming pool.
Yeah, we'd be, yeah. We'd have, we'd have a mess on that. So.
Come May 9th, the weather's gonna change.
We hope. Any questions? But I'll be around after the meeting if you have any more questions.
Peter, anything else on the revised BG-1? We're ready for an approval?
Yeah, that's what we, and just so you know, this is, because of where it was at KDE, this is actually the initial BG-1. We just did some revisions to it. So it's not, you won't be voting on a revised BG-1. You're voting on the initial BG-1.
Okay. Even though we had approved another one at an earlier meeting?
That is exactly right.
Okay. I do know that Fact Pack rejected our BG-1.
That's why.
Today.
That's why.
So this is not a revision, then? This is the actual BG-1 for the project?
That is, that is correct.
My recommendation is for approval. Uh, the BG-1.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Approved the BG-1. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, I have a couple documents here, Peter, for them.
Yep.
From Mark. These are documents concerning the general fund request for construction. And basically, this is, this is the email that I sent to Jeff Coulter, telling him that we had a plan on how to move forward with this project if, if funding was delayed, and we can pay for the project if something, if the worst-case scenario happened. We don't expect it, but if it did, we have the ability to pay these bonds. You never want to do something that's not gonna allow you to pay bonds. And right now, this figures that we have capital outlay cash that will allow that to happen. We actually have about $14 million right now in, that will be needed in bonding. And if you look at the other page right now, we're actually committed to about 11, which is what we have. So we're short just a little bit of money, but this is an interim thing. And as you can see by my email to Jeff Coulter, it really should not matter, because the payment of this bond, even though it's gonna take place sometime in June, it won't be issued until the following year. And by that time, we will know about equalization. So it's probably not gonna cost us anything. But if the worst-case scenario happened, we can still pay the payments. Now, it's gonna stop construction moving forward. There'll be no high school project or anything like that. And of course, we know that. If we don't have funding, we're not gonna have it. But then, what we have to do here tonight is because you have that information in front of you, this is a resolution for the general fund bond issue. And these documents, we've been working on these all week. And that's just a resolution. That resolution has to be approved by the board in order for us to be able to move forward. And it's just saying that we have a finance plan if something happens. So my recommendation is, is that we approve that general fund bond issue in order for us to move forward with the finance plan on this project.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? I think we're on seat.
You're right. Peter's up.
Okay, for this one, I'm actually gonna have Brian, if you don't mind, coming up. And I'm really, am really glad to have Travis Curry here as well. They both have a strong familiarity with these documents. We have a big roll of them in the back. This is consideration and approval of the construction documents for Phase 1, early site and foundation package. So this, in order to keep this project rolling, we've brought you a set of documents that we're ready to send to KDE and to HBC to let them know that we were ready to roll on early site and foundation package. And you may want to just sort of elaborate a little bit on.
Sure. So in order for us to get started, when we would like to get started on this project, I think we're gonna need to move a substantial amount of earth and kind of get that work going before the bus garage is taken offline. So we need to really recoup a lot of that time before that can happen in order to kind of move along with this process. So the early site foundation package, we had sent an initial HBC review in early December, if you all recall. And so that will allow us to have that portion of the work permitted and begin construction. And so that's gonna include all the concrete foundations, the drilled piers, the grade beams, all of those major components of the structural system of the building will be included. And that's what we consider the foundation portion of that package. The site package will include all of the, really all of the site work for the project, but we're including mainly all of the mass earth excavation, rough grading, and everything that has to occur on the site in order for the foundation work to occur. So those, those main components are getting packaged together as what we're calling that early, that Phase 1, that early site and foundation package. We'll be sending that to Codell on March 8th. So we're giving KD a little bit of time to kind of react to those documents. Hopefully, if we get some comments from them, we're able to react to them, and then we'll give Codell the set. In the meantime, we're progressing forward with the documents of this building.
Travis, did you have anything you wanted to add, or?
No. March 8th, we'll get the documents, and we'll spend, I think, by that Wednesday, I think our plan is to have ready to go out to the distributor for advertising.
And we'll need a special called board meeting somewhere in the 1st of April to approve, to review bids and approve the bid on this so that we can get the construction firm, whoever receives the bid, we can get them up and going. And again, we're shooting for May 9th. Should not impact the end of school, but it will have some traffic impacts for the start of next school year. Bus garage will be torn down and out of there sometime between June 15th and July 1st. And we do have an alternate site right now that Mr. Burkhardt's working on, and we're working out the logistics for temporary site until we're able to get a new bus garage built sometime in January, February. There's really nothing for y'all to see here, because it's nothing sexy. It's everything underground that, you know, that's.
Yeah. We do have a set if you, if you would like to take a look at it. But, but if you have any questions also, I know, we can, we can answer those, too.
My recommendation would be to approve those documents and send them to KDE.
I'll make a motion. Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
All right, fantastic. So the next item is, has to do with the building package, and we're looking at a consideration approval of our design development documents. And this is also pending KDE approval. And sort of.
Yeah, so the rest, you know, as I mentioned, with Phase 1 being the site and foundation, Phase 2 will be all of the other components of the building. So all the architectural components, the rest of the primary structural system of the building, and then all of the MEP components, mechanical electrical systems for the building. So all the engineering drawings. And that will have, you know, the floor plans, the layout of the building, the elevations, roofing, all of that will be part of the architectural package. The rest of the structure will be all the steel framing systems, the load-bearing walls, and all of the floor and roof joints and ECU systems. And then obviously, the entire mechanical electrical plumbing package. So that will round out all of the documentation that we'll need for the construction of this facility. But because, you know, again, we wanna get the jump on getting construction started, we've rolled a portion of that out, which you typically don't see on, on just kind of a brand-new building construction.
Brian, I'm not sure. Did we see, did you see the floor plans? Have you all seen them? I don't think our new board members has actually seen those floor plans. Do you have them with you tonight?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Do you have, I mean, something that, in terms of the ones that we had that was sent?
The, the ones that we have here are for the actual drawing sets, so they're not the colored-up floor plans. They're just.
I mean, I don't even think they've seen the actual colored floor plans. Is that correct? Because that was done in December, I think. So.
It was, the schematic design.
I don't know. Jeremy, if I have them on my, you've seen them? You were here. Brian, I can get those to you, but right now, what it involves is you have the adult ed program along with the health sciences and the IT lab that's on the, the first floor. And then the second floor on top of that will include the principal's office, and it will include then the advanced manufacturing lab, the tech lab, carpentry, and diesel is the N1 on the end of the building. It's about a 40,000 square foot building. We saved about 200 or 300 square feet by some design changes late in the fall, which probably saved us over half a million dollars, those design changes did. I will make a note to send those to you where you can review them. But it's a pretty straightforward floor plan, and it's a good design, and it will meet the needs of our kids for years to come. But for the sake of time tonight.
I could pull those drawings out of that set, do we just want the floor plans?
And then maybe you can pull them, and you can look at them after the meeting. So you'll be able to see them after the meeting, if that's okay?
And then we'll, and then we could send another digital copy of the colored floor plans.
I think I may have it, but I may have y'all send it tomorrow. I think we're all gonna be at KSBA anyway, so we can get those to him. But this is in order for, to get these design documents approved, and we're looking at sometime around the early June bid on the remaining packages. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
June bid date. Bond sale the end of June on both projects. So then that means the bond sale hopefully will take place before the end of June. The money will hit the account before July 1. And then we'll have the money in the account to pay. And sooner the money's in the account, the longer we have it. That's the more interest we draw on it, too, which is important to move forward on that. So my recommendation is to approve the design development documents and send to KD.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Next up is the BG-2 and BG-3. And I brought copies for you guys of these two documents. BG-2. These are forms. The Kentucky Department of Education have us fill out, and then I'm gonna have to go back the other way with the BG-3. They have us prepare for the design developments, the middle. So the BG-2 is essentially, you'll notice as you look through it, that was the first one that I handed out to you guys. There are two big things about it that we, they're asking for. It's energy design criteria, which you'll see on pages 1, 2, and 3. And then they also like to have a list of alternates for the project. We currently are listing three. Superintendent mentioned the fourth one, and that was something that we will definitely need to get added to this. And I think it can be, you will, we just probably just add it to it.
Can we go ahead and write that in? And it's a fire suppression.
It's a fire pump house, is what I would say. And that will be number four.
And Peter and I talked today. We'll be meeting with CMTA, and CMTA at some point in time will send a representative down. We'll get with B. Williams, with the water company, and we'll try to see if there's some way, form or fashion, we can handle that without it costing us to do that.
Right.
But we better bid it just in case. Get a price on it. That at least gives us a fair price.
Do y'all have any questions on the BG-2? It's pretty technical stuff, most of it. So the BG-3 is gonna look very similar to the BG-1 that you just approved. We used this document to sort of help generate the new numbers on the BG-1. So this is just a document that KDE likes to see in design development, to make sure that the construction costs are, are estimated where they need to be. And when we filled this out, we noticed that we needed to make some adjustments to the BG-1 as well. So if you have any questions on this, you notice the, the big number, the total project cost line at the bottom, line number 25, matches what your BG-1 had as its total project cost.
My recommendation is to approve the BG-2 and BG-3 on this project.
Motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Yes, thank you so much for all your time.
Thank you.
It was a long one tonight.
That is the BG-3 site. Travis, you got it going. So put it on packet. You wanna get your signature, Travis, and you get that. Felicia will probably have to have it.
Yeah, I'm gonna want her to get to, here you go. I'm gonna want you to get BG-1.
Angie's got it right there, and I've got the thing.
Yeah. We'll need somebody to do it on Fact Pack tomorrow. That's the big thing.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have our C-dip and C-sip report from South Urban.
Mr. Stephen Willis, as we told you all, we, we sort of had a miscommunication, and South Urban did not have their C-dip done. We've worked over the last few months to talk about some of the improvements that we'll be doing at South Urban, and he's here to present.
All right. Thank you. Jeremy, do you have my 99-page PowerPoint ready to go? Okay. All right. On the C-dip, there's three major. Oh, you're fine. On the C-dip, there's three major components, and I'll go through those. C-sip.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies. C.
Can't dip, you gotta sip.
C-sip. There's three major components. The first one, these are in your board packet. The first one is kindergarten readiness. By August 2019, 90% of incoming kindergarten students who attended preschool will be kindergarten-ready, according to multiple data measures. Last year, we were like at 88.7. So our goal is to be at 90% come August 2019. Our second point is addressing our gap by May 2019. Decrease the percentage of students with disabilities scoring below expectations on multiple measures. And our goal is to raise those students. And our goal is to raise those students by ten percent on their individual levels. The third component of this is kindergarten transition. By the end of the year two thousand nineteen, all students will increase kindergarten readiness skills by participating in targeted instruction based on student needs according to multiple data sources. How this is gonna be accomplished is, at South Urban, we revamped our P L C protocols. You know, at the middle school and high school level, you share students. They go from class to class. In your lower grade levels, when you get down into primary, there's a lot of ownership of, of students. You have teachers, and I mean this in the sincerest way, but you have people that are in my school, you have queens of their kingdoms, and they know their students, and they love them, and they spend multiple hours with those students. But we don't always know what's going on in other people's classrooms. I know through walkthroughs, and so we have revamped our P L C protocol. We're more open, we're sharing data. We now have a data wall, we have a huge wall, and we are tracking each student individually. You can look at a glance, at a glance, you can look at your class, compare it to your neighbor's class. And this has been great because it's open dialogue between teachers. You know, you have five of your kids, they can, they know six of their shapes. Mine, I've got a group, and they only know two. What are you doing to get those up there? And so we have started that recently, and we're hoping to, I guess, knock down some of those borders in primary. And the data wall is new for preschool. Other grade levels have done that for a few years, but that's a, that's a new step for us, to share all that data. And it also enables, as a school, to have ownership for every student, even though that student is primarily, primary with you. Now, part of that kindergarten transition, those last thirty days, what we're also gonna focus on is moving students around to different teachers. And that is very, that's huge for preschool. Letting your children go to a different classroom, creating groups very elementary-like. So those are some steps that we're taking at South Urban to prepare these children for kindergarten. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
So they would kind of like rotate like they do at the middle school level?
Yeah, exactly.
Give their kids a different angle.
You know, with our preschool classrooms, our teachers, they, you know, they've got their kids, they've got their twenty kids, they, they get them off the bus, they have breakfast with them, I mean, they have breakfast, they set it at the table with them, they teach them, they have lunch with them, they educate them, they take naps, they're with them all day. So we're trying to open it up and let other people see what other people are doing, and open that dialogue, yeah.
Is this a trial, Stephen, or is it, I mean, if, if we do it for so long, and we see it's not working, are we gonna go back to what?
I think, I think anything's a trial. The only consistent in education is change. So we are on our third walkthrough this year. I think, and I think that speaks volumes for this central office. If something's not working, you know, we can't really wait till May to change it, you know, let's, let's revamp it, let's look at it, and so, but yes, it's, well, we kind of started this last year with that thirty days, where we went from a four-day preschool program to a five-day. It gave us some bonus days. So we did work with that some last year, with last year's group. So we're just modifying that. I think the whole point of this process is to be more pinpoint accurate on these students' learning and knowing exactly where they are. But the other major component is, everybody knows where that kid is in their education.
When Jessica and Stephen works together, if you talk to kindergarten teachers, they're gonna tell you, I want my kindergarten kids to know their letters and sounds, and I want them to know their numbers. And, and we first talked about, you know, old high school me thought, well, maybe we need to tell them that they need to be reading at a certain level within F and P going into kindergarten. And we decided that's really not necessary. If we've got kids that are reading at different levels, and if we've got kids that can be in leveled readers, they're gonna put them in leveled readers. They're gonna meet the kids where they're at, but the big deal is, is that all letters, all sounds, numbers through thirty, I believe it was, and getting them used to that kindergarten environment. It's, it's a ramped up, we get, we get an additional thirty days now because preschool's now five days a week. So we took what used to be preschool, which ends in April, now we've got thirty extra days. Let's do something with those thirty days. Let's ramp it up and get those kids ready. So doing a good job. This is different from what they did last year, so they're already sort of tweaking the program that they had last year. And now, because it's data-driven with Mr. Willis and with our two team leads over there that are two extraordinary teachers that have a lot of success, leading those younger teachers to be able to track those kids' progress, a lot of good things going. They, they've had some good results at South Urban. As you all know, we went from forty-six, forty-seven percent kindergarten ready to last year, almost eighty-eight percent kindergarten ready for those that attended preschool. That is huge advancements. That doesn't mean we can't do more, and that's what we're gonna do. We're, they, they know that they're responsible for those kids going to Estle Springs. And in turn, Estle Springs is working with them. Their reading specialist at Estle Springs, Ms. Mullins and her staff, they're working with those teachers, say, this is what we need, this, how can we help you in providing support? Because Estle Springs owns those kids. They better, that's the whole ideal behind one school, one district. We're one big independent school district, K through twelve. We may be in five buildings, but we all belong to each other, and that's what this is all about. So I appreciate the job that Mr. Willis is doing, and I don't know if y'all have any other questions, but that's his plan. That's South Urban's plan, not his plan.
That's South Urban's plan, that is not my plan.
South Urban owns that plan.
That is our plan.
Let me correct that, that is South Urban's.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, we have staffing policies next on the agenda.
I think last year, and I, I got the looking back, last year, I sent you district staffing policies, and at that time, I'm trying to see... Maybe I've got my packet messed up, but I don't see school staffing. Do y'all have district and school?
Just district.
I don't, I don't see the school staffing one, and that's the one that, that's the one we really have to act on tonight. Did I fail to get that one to you? I will have to, we, we've got to approve the school staffing policy. I'll have to go up and run that one. Do what? Do you, did I, I believe I sent it to you, if you don't care, if you could see, if you could find the school staffing policy. This is our district staffing policy, and right now, we can approve this one, just know that there may be a couple of changes to this, but this sort of allows me to start planning budget. Remember that we've got a May budget due, so these staffing policies sort of give us the, sort of the guidelines in order to deal with our budget. So I did circle or in yellow, you'll see the changes so far, and if you all will give me a tentative approval on this, then there might be some changes coming up, and we'll, we'll relook at this in May, but if you can right now. We did add a C M A at the middle school, and that is now on there, and that so far has been really good. You're gonna see here in a minute, on an athletic trainer contract, we have a proposal from Bluegrass Orthopedics for an athletic trainer, and Markham Wallace has, this week, indicated that, yes, they're gonna step up and partner with that. And our cost, total cost of that athletic training contract, I believe, was seventeen thousand dollars. It was eighty-five hundred dollars. Bluegrass was going to pay, we were gonna pay eighty-five hundred, and Bluegrass suggested, hey, we need Markham Wallace to really be a part of this. We don't want to come in and kick the local hospital to the curb. We need them to be a part. After talking with Susie and her staff, she's agreed, they want to be a part of that, and in doing so, she's gonna pick up half of our cost. So technically, we'll have an athletic trainer next year at all, definitely all events, home events, for the most part. We might not be able to get every one of them, but that athletic trainer is gonna be on-site. Football, soccer, basketball, baseball, and softball, it's a year-long thing. If it goes over, Bluegrass says in the contract, we'll see it here in a minute, that they'll pick up any additional cost. Our cost is fixed at eighty-five hundred dollars, and now it's fixed at forty-two fifty. But I want to put that on there because that's part of student health services. Our school law enforcement officer is on there, which was added, and we're working on that. We're, we're talking to Tim about whether or not the twenty-five bus assistants, right now, we only have about twenty full-time bus assistants, but we have those people, they have to work for at least two years before we put them on full-time. We're having some discussion about whether or not we want to continue that. I, I believe we probably will. One of the issues behind that is, it seemed like sometimes, and it doesn't happen all the time, but when you put some of them on full-time, then that does give them sick leave days, and then it seems like there's a lot of sick leave used, which does cost the district, you know, additional money. But I don't think that is a bigger problem, as we've talked about it in the past, and it outweighs the fact that if you have musical chairs, you really need that bus assistant that's with those kids every day, that knows those kids. And when you've got musical chairs, you lose some of that protection that we have over kids, so we probably won't change that. Just know that Title I can change a little bit. This, right now, this is a new preschool contract with Community Action Council. Just know that we have requested a sixth teacher from them, and right now, I feel good that they're gonna renew what we got, and I feel there's a better than seventy-five percent chance we could get an additional preschool, which means an opportunity for twenty more kids, at their cost. It's not gonna cost us anything, other than the fact we gotta supply the room, and keep that up and going. Adult education, just know now that that's not a district program no more, we're in a grant contract with Franklin County. Adult ed's just changing, that's the way it is now. But those positions haven't changed, and we do now have our gear-up program. So those are four additional jobs that's listed there. Right now, I think this thing is pretty solid. I'm gonna ask you for an approval on it tonight, and, and then if there are some changes, I'll bring it back for revision at the next, at the May meeting. So my recommendation, do you all just approve that district staffing with those changes?
Mr. Saylor?
Yes.
All that health coordinator, and the nurse, and the L P N. Where, the L P N is at West Urban?
Uh...
The R N is, the L P N is at West Urban?
Which one, the R N's?
She...
The R N's.
The R N's at Estle Springs.
And then Erica is in charge of all of it?
Right.
And then the C M A, we put at the middle school. So what school is missing, South Urban?
South Urban, the nurse goes over there, and Erica takes care of South Urban in her spare time, and then right now, the C M A spends some time at the high school. We've not got them, they're trying to get established at the middle school right now. I don't think that we actually have set days right now at the high school, but they will expand into high school during the day. So once we get that in place, we can sort of see how that's going before we tackle anything else. But that's sort of where we're at. And I know that we've been involved once with Markham Wallace in a grant proposal, that in that grant proposal, we were to receive a C M A. They weren't successful with that grant proposal, but I think they're ready to possibly submit that again. And of course, I'm telling you nothing, I'm giving you all the information because it's John Isfert that we work with, and he says usually it takes a couple of times before sometimes those grants are approved. So if we're able to get that other position through a grant here in the next little bit, that person would be at the high school, so providing services for all of our kids. So we're in, we're in better shape right now than we've been in a long time for health services for our students. And that's a big expense, it's a worthy expense of the board, though, because I do think it impacts attendance and everything else that we deal with. Any other questions about those? I'll have to go get it. That's my fault, I guess. I, I thought I sent it to you, and goes to show, two men irons in the fire.
Do we have a motion? Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Um, can we, I tell you what, let's, let's go on, and then I'll have to get that school staffing policy. I've gotta have that one approved, because if not, I can't give the schools their allocations. So we can go on for a minute, we'll get these done, and then we'll come back. I'll run up and get it. And that's my fault, I apologize. It's, it's on my computer upstairs. I thought I'd sent it by email, let me, and it's a little bit hard for me to check that.
You sent it to District Law and Defense, A, that helps you.
I'm gonna go check on it, she thinks her husband's sick, and she needs to, she thinks he's sick, and she needs to step out.
Okay.
You want to get it while she's checking?
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me real quick, let's just take that one second right there.
Does anybody want to do entertainment? You may like to sing or dance.
I'm not very good with the band, I don't know.
That would be entertaining.
You have to get in front of everybody.
I already had some.
I have some Jack Siri.
I don't have to do much to eat, you know.
I'm getting ready now on this wood up here.
We needed Marty here doing the concession.
Yes, exactly.
During the first local planning committee, you brought a snack.
He did, yeah. He brought this deep-fried pretzel, was that what it, wasn't it?
Delicious, yes.
I didn't try it, but it smelled, it like starved us.
Really?
Yeah. He said it like right there, and we were all like...
We lost by three yesterday. We lost in the last minute of the game.
No kids.
Twenty-two seconds left.
Yeah, they led the whole way.
We led the whole game.
I had the lead in the first quarter, and then they were having a lead immediately. Ron was keeping us...
I never did, I never got an update after halftime, so I thought, ooh, that's not good. Oh, they beat us by more then, that's five.
They missed a foul, and then they went to the free throw line and shot free throws.
That's the best one.
That made no play.
Huh?
Uh-uh.
I'm leaving at five thirty.
I'm not leaving at five thirty.
I always go with the head early. That's just so I can get a list of everything. But I'm not hurt, so you can always go up and just get him served. But it's a busy day except for... They don't bother me.
You know what I did? I didn't go to the field. I registered for more rest here.
I didn't realize our presentation was...
I knew she had passed.
It's my fault. It was laying on my table.
Well, you missed Charlotte and Jessica wrestle for doughnuts.
One doughnut?
While you were gone.
I don't know why they brought one.
No, it was a bag of doughnuts. And Charlotte won.
School staffing policy, the reason why it's so important is that our SBDM allocations have to go out on March one. There's no changes to this policy whatsoever. We may have some discussions in the coming days in terms of the equity now between West Urban and Estle Springs because of population. We may need to talk about administrative help in that building and some changes that may need to be made. But that's something we can do as time goes forward that really doesn't impact what I've got to have for March one. And that's at the top of the second page, is the student-teacher ratios. And right now, in primary, we're staffed twenty-four to one. That's grades K through three. Preschool, of course, is a state mandate of twenty to a classroom, but preschool is not part of school staffing. It's not an SBDM school. Grades four through five is staffed at twenty-eight to one. Grades six through eight is twenty-nine to one. And nine through twelve is twenty-nine to one as well. And that's what we've been staffing on. No other changes. Again, remember, your student population is going up on the upper end, it's going down on the lower end. So we're seeing those changes take place. So you'll see an actual reduction maybe in the number of SBDM teaching positions. But in some cases, we'll fill some of those with Title I. But we will have a reduction of somewhere between two to three teachers for the coming school year. And that's because of population loss at the elementary levels. So if you all are comfortable with that, there's absolutely no changes from last year. If we can approve that, it would be a tremendous asset for me to get that to our schools.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
And my apologies to Ms. Flecia on that, because that's totally my fault. She'll get it, she'll get it in the package if I get it to her.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our calendars.
I think the first one that, the first one that I put on there is the current school calendar. Of course, this was before, this was before we've missed the last two days. So this calendar is actually off. Right now, we had talked about, closing day was actually supposed to be on the seventeenth? No, 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 no. The closing day was on the fifteenth, but that was, that was the original closing day. We were actually up to the twenty-fourth as our closing day. So just to let you know, and that's before we missed the last two days. So now the twenty-fourth is a school day. And if we don't do anything with the twenty-seventh, we talked about a teacher workday on Memorial Day. I'm already hearing boo hiss on that, because nobody wants to work on Memorial Day, and I understand that. So just know, if we don't do that, that means the twenty-eighth is the last day for students, the twenty-ninth is closing day. And that means we actually have two days left that we can play with. Just know that there is snow in the forecast for this coming week on Thursday and Friday. So we knew that when we took three days of spring break back in the fall, that that possibility was there, that we may have to take Thursday and Friday as spring break. We did last year. We had to take it. I don't know that you're willing to say tonight that that's what we need to do. But I also know, if we wait to March, you're going to have people that's going to make plans. So you're going to have bad attendance days. And I will say this, our teachers and students stepped up to the plate last year when we had to take spring break. It was a great attendance week. I think we had somewhere around ninety-three and a half percent attendance for that week when spring break was actually scheduled. I don't know if you're wanting to do anything like that tonight, in terms of going ahead and announcing that we could take spring break. If we miss next Thursday and Friday, we're really up against it. We're going into June. Just know that. That does have an impact on a teacher that wants to retire, because they would have to take a de-duct day for every day in June in order for them to retire June one. Because they want to retire June one, because if they do, they get a June check. If they don't, then it's a July check. And you'll never live long enough to get that June check. Once it's gone, it's gone. So that's why we always try to get out before June first. It, it's really hard to sit here and tell you all, if we miss next Thursday and Friday, spring break's gone. But we can announce that tonight, and we would have to amend the calendar in March. But I think everybody needs to realize that we cannot, unless you all have no problem with going into June. We've actually got three makeup days that would push closing day into June. Somebody would have to take one de-duct day, right, Flecia, in order to retire out, if they want to take a June check.
I have a question about like snow days. So when you have weather day, other districts, I mean, obviously, we live in the mountains, but you have other districts that don't call off school. So how do they get by with that if something did happen? You know, obviously, you know, we're trying to keep kids safe, and I'll get, I don't know, boo hess, and I'd get boo hess about trying to send kids to school.
Yeah.
How do other districts get around that whenever, let's just say that it's a skip of snow on a day that Estle County would call it off compared to this district, and they don't?
Well, this year, it's been a little bit funny, because there's been about two times that there's been snow in the mountain areas of the Red River Gorge, which gets us up on Furnace Mountain where I live. So we've got three county, or three mountains within this county. You've got Jackson County, you've got Barnes Mountain, then you've got Furnace Mountain. And those three times, one time this year, we had to call off because it was bad on Furnace Mountain, and it was bad on Barnes Mountain. Okay, everywhere else. The one day that everybody, when people pick up the phone and call, who's the idiot that made the decision to have school today? I can tell you that, that idiot's me. And in that particular case, that day, we had eighty-nine percent attendance. That's our lowest attendance day this year, because people were in disagreement. But for the most part, it, it's just really funny. There's, there's days that people south of us, they, they're out of school, we're not. So, I mean, it's been a really funny year this year. It's not been really that it's just everybody blanket has been out. We missed three days before Christmas. That's not happened, that's probably not happened three times in my thirty-four-year career, that I've seen three days missed before Christmas. So, I mean, we try to make a decision based on, sometimes we think our buses can make it, but quite honestly, I worry about kids that drive. And when I have to worry about kids that drive, then sometimes that plays into my decision as well. And I can tell you, if it means keeping everybody safe, I'll go to June fourth, you know, in making that decision. You know, I would rather do that. But every day we can, we try to have it. We've still got one snow day to play with, so that's a possibility. We can still have a workday. So we've probably got four days. I, I think, I think we're at the end, but now, I can't promise you that. I remember one year during regional basketball tournament, we got sixteen inches of snow. Okay? So it can happen in March and April that something like that can happen. If it does, we'll just have to live with it. But I, I just, just want you all to know where we're at right now. And again, boo hiss on Memorial Day, I don't want to make anybody work on Memorial Day. We even talked about, hey, we'll let teachers do some makeup time at other times and bring them in and just have a big picnic. And even that was, y'all sort of frowned on. So I, I, I just think Memorial Day, we need to leave out. It's a, it's an unpaid holiday, and we'll just sort of roll the dice here. And if, if the worst thing happens, I'm just letting everybody know right now, we come back in March, we may have to say, hey, we've got to go to school on Thursday and Friday that first week in April. Is that okay with everybody? That we're putting that out there? We'll put it out there on social media tomorrow to say, listen, our spring break is dependent upon weather in the next few weeks. Is that okay with everybody? And we won't take action on that. This is just to let you know where we're at right now. Closing day right now would be on the twenty-ninth of May. Graduation would be on the thirty-first of May, on Friday night.
I might need those Kleenexes.
Save a few. So that's just for you all's information. Now, the next one, for nineteen and twenty, we'll have to have an approval on. And that's next year's calendar. There is a new law now that specifies a calendar committee that's made up of community leaders. And one board member, I think Ms. Sheila served on that, I know she had to leave a minute ago, but they came back with this particular calendar, showing a closing day on the fifteenth of May. It does include a full fall break, which I think everybody here is used to. Just know that fall break is what puts us in trouble sometimes into June, but that's okay. We do have two full weeks off at Christmas. We had actually thought about coming back on Thursday and Friday, but just felt like that it may not be the worth of return on investment. Again, we got to realize, with this new law, Mr. Saylor can't dictate the calendar. That committee has the full say, you know? We can't dictate that calendar. It takes a lot of input on that. We want to honor the people that was on that committee. So we would start out with a teacher day back on the sixth of January. Our teachers really enjoy that day. It gives them time to get ready for those kids to come back. So in actuality, kids will actually be out eleven days, the way the calendar hits. But it's a good schedule. We got spring break scheduled for the last week of March, first week of April. And we'll just deal with it. There shouldn't be a delay in the start of school though, because the Aerie Technology Center will be there. We're going to have some traffic issues, and we'll work with Travis to make sure we've got good traffic patterns and everything else. But our construction will not delay this. Now, if we're fortunate enough to receive the EDA grant, and we have the money to proceed with the high school renovation next spring, which that high school renovation could bid in the spring of twenty-one? Is that right? So that, no, it's next spring, spring of twenty.
Yeah.
It could bid in the, it could bid in the spring of twenty. So we could have some delays and stuff around that. But right now, this calendar, we won't have to worry about starting late or anything along that line. I, I recommend this calendar for approval, because it was worked on by a very good committee.
So the first day to students would be the sixth?
First day of students will be the sixth, opening day on the fifth. And we have to start early because of fall break. Again, if we don't have fall break, we can delay the start. But if we have fall break, we got to start early. Everybody has to realize, we have to put in one-hundred-and-seventy instructional days. There's one-hundred-and-seventy-seven instructional days here, and that's what allows us to have seven staff workdays during snow weather. That's seven days we don't have to make up. We actually have one scheduled for the sixth. So we have basically six NTI days, without really them being NTI days. Once we get a one-to-one program established, we will turn those into NTI days, even though we don't really have KD approval for those. We'll have student work packets and things for our students to do on those six snow days. We'll count them as instructional days. So, that's your calendar. My recommendation is approve it.
You'll make a motion? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? We've been here a while, Brian, so we forgive you. So next, we have start and ending times.
Start and ending times, as you know, last year, I came to you off a proposal of starting school fifteen minutes later, twenty minutes later at the high school and middle school. We, we've just run into all kinds of issues. I'm man enough to say, okay, when you make a mistake, you make a mistake. We've got kids that are having to be dropped off an hour before school starts because of working parents. That's not fair to those kids. We're working really hard to revise our bus routes and try to narrow them down to where we can try not to pick up kids any earlier than we are right now. We've made some changes. There'll be some changes over on the south end of the county. Matter of fact, starting next week, in terms of bus shuttles, we will go back to using South Urban as a bus shuttle, because it's just too crowded at West Urban in the afternoons, and it's causing delays in our kids getting home. So every once in a while, you make a mistake, you got to back up, you got on it and say it's a mistake, we need to go back. So basically, what I'm asking you to do is that we're going to set the start times, again, at eight o'clock for all schools for next school year dismissal, then we'll go back to three o'clock and three oh five. And we may even work on the three oh five at the high school. We may not have to do that. Now that we got South Urban back onboard, we may not need that five-minute differential between high school, middle school, and the three elementaries. If we don't, they'll dismiss at three o'clock as well. But I would ask for you all's approval tonight to let's go back to our original start times, and I'll not mess with those again. You'll not see me come back and say anything about in the next four years about changing the start time, okay?
You're on tape.
I'm on tape.
Do we have a motion? Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
I want to take fifteen minutes to...
But you got your way, so...
Well, I, well, I know that it, it's just been hard. It's been hard on staff, our classified staff, trying to get people there to watch kids and, and different things. And, you know, we got to be fair to our classified staff. We can't ask them to work over their time. And, you know, it's hard on principals, it's been hard on bus drivers to get routes rearranged and do the things that they need to do. And it's just ended up, it was more of an issue than I thought it would be, just to be honest. It was one of those things that I wish I hadn't tackled. But we'll be okay. It'll work out.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have our consent items.
Really nothing there that stands out. Just letting you know that we've got an application for the Steel Reese Foundation. That's forty thousand dollars towards our one-to-one computer initiative. If that, if that grant does happen, we feel good about that grant. We got it submitted this week, and Teresa and Jeremy worked on that grant. I sort of assisted with some of the numbers, but I give those two individuals full credit for getting that grant up and running. And it's been submitted, and if we're able to get that money, then we may be able to free up some money within our budget for some other items that we need. The lady we've talked to really likes our application, and I feel good about it. We'll see what happens. We'll know here in the next, we'll know about August, I think she said. So we'll have a good ideal then. Talked to you about the athletic trainer contract already. Eighty-five hundred dollars is our commitment. When Markham Wallace comes onboard, I've already been told they're onboard. They've just not got the letter written yet. It's part of their foundation that they've got to get permission for that forty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Markham Wallace's part in that is going to be, they're going to provide training to athletes and parents for injury prevention. And we're committing to injury prevention through nutrition and through some of the workouts and exercises they do to try to alleviate injuries before they ever happen. And they've tried it once, and we just didn't have the buy-in that we need, but we'll get the buy-in that we need. This is important for our kids. It's important for our budget. Forty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars is forty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Any way you slice it, it goes to pay for other expenses. And then the SFCC offer assistance. That's something we do all the time. That's our technology money. Usually, it's about, was it fifty thousand, Jeremy? And we match it with fifty, or is it? It's fifty and fifty for the whole year. So it's about a hundred thousand dollars. It's a one-for-one match.
That's not, that's not a dependent to fifty.
It's close. It's based on a ADA figure that they come up with, and this one is, this one's like twelve or thirteen dollars a student, isn't it? And then...
Yeah, they do three different payouts of about twelve dollars.
We'll get another one, we'll get another one here probably March, early April. If you don't match it, you lose the money. So, we gotta spend it anyway, so it's crazy not to match it. So, my recommendation is to approve all those consent items.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Do we have any public comments?
I know there might have been a comment about the $250 payment for 2 preschool aides that had completed their training, and there's a $50 payment that the group supplies the $200, the board pays 50. That's something we've always done. It's just a fact, this time, they call us like on Monday and say, we gotta have a check Friday, and checks was already written. That's why you've got that extra warrant for that. I deemed it was an emergency. We don't want to knock those people out of a $250 bonus for something that they worked hard on to complete, so that's why it was there. Okay, so, there was a question about that, and I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
So, it's accounts payable and it's taken care of. Lisa? 25 for us, but it's 250 total for them, correct? Or something like that? And our part was just 25, so it allows them to get that.
It was my understanding they had to have from us to get reimbursed. Okay.
So, it's, that's taken care of. We will make sure to do that.
And next, we have your report.
Okay, real quick, you got your notification of personnel that's in there. You also have my activity report as soon as I hand it to you. And that is, that are, those are the activities I've been involved in here over the last few weeks. And I always try to update y'all to let you know, it's not every little thing, but it's some of the highlighted things that we do. And of course, the big thing on there, of course, is the LPC meetings. That's some of the big things. Been to Frankfurt a couple times and been really involved in the Career Tech Center to keep it moving along. As they told you earlier, it's a tight schedule. Also, put this extra service stop in comparison there. I want you all to really take your time and look at that. And as I told you before, we're pretty comparable when you look at that to what you see happen. I know we had some questions from our baseball and softball coaches and stuff like that, and you're gonna see, we're probably about right in the middle. We're higher than some, we're lower than some, but we're sort of somewhere right in the average. Same thing with some of it. We might be a little bit lower in some of our major sports in terms of football and softball, or football and basketball, we may be on the lower end a little bit, but we're pretty close. When you look at those assistant salaries and stuff like that, and listen, I'll tell you this, I coached for 14 years. If you think you're gonna get what you're worth, you're in it for the wrong reason. And that doesn't mean that we can't make some changes, but I want you all to look at that, and we'll have a discussion around that if you all want to do some changes or look at some changes in terms of that. But overall, you can see that we're in pretty good shape. And even when you look at middle school, I think, which is the back page of that, you can see we're pretty comparable there across the board as well. When school districts started having to cut money, one of the places that it happened was in extra service pay schedules. I do want to give you the EDA letter, and you all should be excited to get this letter. That means we move on to round 2. We have until March 15th to submit a full application. This is on the $3 million grant. Teresa and Charlotte's here, they'll be working on it in the morning, Jeremy, and I've asked them, I also get Tanya. Of course, we'll be leaving for KSBA, but they're gonna get started on this in the morning. Jim Codel called me on Friday and said, Jeff, you're getting a letter early next week. I got it yesterday. So, that is the letter saying that we've made it to round 2. It says, you're not guaranteed anything, but if you don't make it to round 2, guess what? You're out. You don't get no money. So, we're in right now. So, I'd rather be in than out. And then, of course, KSBA conference, I'll see you all down there tomorrow.
In a couple hours.
Yeah, 1 o'clock. 1 o'clock is the opening session.
Ginny Jones leaving in the morning at 5:30.
Oh, that's right, you do some of the early classes. So, that's where we're at, and that's it.
I would just like to say on behalf of the board, that we did discuss the tentative contract of you, and we proved that just some of the accomplishments that we'd like to call out, that we discussed and talked about our decision was just the vision and mission work that you've accomplished since you've been here. We're very much appreciative of that. And the budget reduction, I know that was a challenge, you put to that challenge, and then just the nickel tax was definitely a plus. We would not have been able to do all these projects and advance our district if we had not have gotten the nickel tax. And just the Career and Technical Center that grant that we're working on as well as getting that was over $5.7 million. So, we just wanted to share that and make a statement that that was part of our reason, and we challenge you to continue to work hard for this district, and we want to see this district move forward. And we've definitely moved forward in the last 4 years, so we want to continue in that direction.
Well, I will say real quick, I'm an adopted engineer, and I appreciate the fact of this community welcoming me the way that you have. I promise you this, you will not have anybody work harder for you than I will work in the next 4 years. I look forward to spending that time here in this district. And this is my 34th year in education, and I'm telling you, this past year has been my best year, and next year will be my next best year, and we'll continue to work together as a group, and I will try to earn the trust of, continue to earn the trust of this board. And I will also work hard for these staff members. We've got a, we've got a lot to be thankful for. There's not a better group of people. We, as a board, we've got to try to figure out how we can look at pay raises for our employees. That's one big thing that I really want to look at, and how we can achieve that. We've got to try to continue to monitor our budget and manage a decline in enrollment. And those 2 things are contrary to each other. When you got a decline in enrollment, it's hard to add revenue. But our employees work hard, and we have to try to take care of our employees and listen to their needs. And I know there's some, there's some, anytime you've got the change that's taking place in our schools, you have some concerns out there. You have employees that are nervous about what's going on, but I'd say this, a little bit of anxiety is good. You don't want to be overtaxed with, and feel burdened about coming to work. But as long as we're trying to do what's best for kids and we're trying to advance kids, then that's all we're asking. I will always, there's not a harder group of working people in this state than we have here in Estill County. And we're gonna pull together, we'll work together. This central office is working as a help to our schools, and we invite any employee. I don't have to sit here, I don't have to be praised. If we have employees that have concerns, my extension is 22222. It's very easy to get ahold of me. I will set an appointment, I will listen to your concerns. My cellphone is well-known throughout this whole county, it's been published several times. Call me at any time. We want to listen to our employees. For example, today, we sent out survey results from our classified people. Our classified people said there were some things that we needed to work on. And we surveyed them, and we went and interviewed them and asked them, okay, what things can we do? We put out today, this afternoon, an action plan to deal with the things that they said are things that we need to do to make our school district better. We want to make our school district better. We want to make this a great place to work and a great place to be a part of, and we will make it a great place for our kids and our families. And I appreciate y'all's confidence in me, and I promise you, I will work hard for the next 4 years to make that happen. Thank you all very much.
And a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All in favor?
If you want to see the 4 plans, they're right there.